Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 21st, 2016 meeting of the Northfield Township Planning Commission at 7:01. If you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stanulich, would you call the roll, please?
Iaquinto?
Here.
Chick?
Here.
Dignan?
Present.
Stanulich is here. Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
And Ms. Chocley is absent with notice.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Support.
Motion by Chick, supported by Iaquinto. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Next item is call to the public. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board, you may do so at this time. If you'd like to address the board, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one from the public, we'll move on. There is no commissioner clarifications at this point in time. Correspondence? I have no correspondence. Does anyone else? No? All right. I will mention that there was a postcard that probably came to everyone, but it's the Michigan Citizens Planner Classroom Series. The 26th through, September 26th through November 14th, it'll be Monday evenings in Washtenaw County. If you have any questions, you can see me on it. I've got that information. I think it also came to all of you. All right. Public hearings. We do have a public hearing tonight in regards to the amendments to the Northfield Township zoning ordinance text for kennels conditional use in the LI Limited Industrial and General Industrial Districts. Yes? Mr. Stanulich.
I move to open a public hearing for amendments to the Northfield Township zoning ordinance text to make kennels conditional use in the LI Limited Industrial District and GI and General Industrial District.
Support. There's a motion by Stanulich, supported by Mr. Iaquinto. Sorry about that. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. If there's anyone here that would like to address the board in regards to the public hearing, you may step to the microphone and do so at this time.
My name's Dave Hughes. I'm with Vance and O'Brien. We're a design build firm here in Dexter. My address is 2375 Bishop Circle in Dexter. And I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to speak, but I'm here on behalf of the Ann Arbor Dog Training Club, which I think had something to do with initiating this, the adoption of the text that allows a dog kennel. But I'm here again to kind of represent the Dog Training Club and let you know that we, if there is text that is adopted that will allow our use, then we are, we plan to submit for a site plan application for an expansion to the building. But again, it depends on the text amendment ordinance. I did meet with your planner here a few days ago, and there's, you know, a few matters that I'd like to resolve or address here before it goes too far. But my client's use is not necessarily a kennel, but it apparently would fit into the dog kennel text. But it's a training, dog obedience and agility training center that the animals are there during the day and gone at night, nothing overnight, no boarding, nothing of that nature. But it's a, they've existed for, well, since 1979, I think they've been there and find out that there's, they're not conforming use. So, again, not sure if this is the appropriate time.
Yeah.
I'm here for a.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. I am going to ask Mr. Sloan to discuss. There are two items here. We have the public hearing, but the applicant, the individual who spoke, there is an application to that was put in that we're going to address at some point in time, correct?
Correct. We can address it under the unfinished business, or under the new business portion. I think we can talk about it in the context of that.
Okay. Well, we'll do it under.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
There's a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. Motion by Iaquinto, supported by Stanulich. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Mr. Sloan, we'll talk about that under Planning Consultant Report.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports from committees. Board of Trustees report. Ms. Chick.
Board of Trustees met September 13. We did accept another easement for the non-motorized path along Barker Road, so there are plans to move forward with getting construction bids on that. There are still a couple of easements we have not gotten, but we're going to move ahead anyway.
Can you say on what again, please? I'm sorry, Ms. First word.
We've accepted, are we, sorry. We have received another easement for the non-motorized path along Barker Road, the Phase 3. And there are still a couple of easements we have not acquired yet, but we're working on it, but we've decided to go ahead and look for construction bids. And then there was further discussion about the Van Curler property. And we also received a proposal from Salem and Ann Arbor for a Pontiac Trail motor, non-motorized path that would go into, a little bit into Northfield Township, and talked about doing a feasibility study along with them to see if that's a possibility. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chick. Any questions for Ms. Chick? I do have one question. You said there's still a couple easements that have not yet been obtained, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any, was there any prognosis or any idea when those were going to be obtained?
Mr. Fink is actually working on it. He's been working on it, and he's, we're still in that process.
Perfect. All right. Next is only Board of Appeals report with Ms. Chocley not here. We'll move on. Staff report. Is there anything from staff?
Van Curler property closed.
It did close.
Township is the official.
Wonderful. All right. Excellent. We'll look forward to the dedication. What is the date of that dedication?
Twenty-third.
The 23rd of?
Sunday.
October. October 23rd.
Let me just double check the date.
I think that's right. Okay. Next is Planning Consultant Report. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. A couple days ago, we met at Township Hall with the representative, Mr. Hughes of the Ann Arbor Dog Club, who's representing, who is representing them on a future application. And this is not necessarily in parallel, but will come in the wake of a change to the zoning ordinance that we're proposing to make kennels conditional uses in the limited industrial district and general industrial district. Should those amendments be adopted, the Ann Arbor Dog Club can make an application for special use approval and site plan approval for an upcoming application that it will be proposing. We looked at a concept plan of the proposal, and there were a few issues that were zoning related, one of which was the setbacks of the building, of the proposed building to the lot lines. Currently, the minimum setback, I believe, is 200 feet, which is comparatively large compared to other zoning ordinances that regulate kennels and similar uses. Another was that the existing parking lot and the proposed parking lot wouldn't be asphalt or concrete, it would remain gravel. That's the proposal. And again, the zoning ordinance requires parking lots to be hard surface asphalt or concrete. There are some circumstances in an AR district where the Planning Commission can modify that requirement, but in an industrial district like the Ann Arbor Dog Training Club, that hard surface would be required. So, the options for the applicant, should the proposed amendments for the use be approved, would be to either go to the zoning Board of Appeals and seek a variance for setbacks and parking lot surfacing, or to apply for a formal zoning text amendment, which would be an applicant-driven application, similar to when someone rezones their property. But in the case of a text amendment, the applicant writes the text or something similar for the township to consider for adoption. We discussed some of the options that the applicant would have. We didn't reach any resolutions in terms of which way the applicant would want to go, whether it was to apply for an amendment to the zoning ordinance text or to go to the zoning Board of Appeals. But I just wanted to let the Planning Commission know that we had that discussion, because in prior meetings, when we've talked about amending the zoning ordinance to allow kennels as conditional uses in limited industrial and general industrial, you know, up until Monday, we hadn't had any discussions with Ann Arbor Dog Club in terms of what their plans are, their future plans, their buildings, things like that. So, the amendments on the agenda tonight are purely from a use standpoint in a district and nothing more, even though we did so with the knowledge that Ann Arbor Dog Club is located in the general industrial, so that would give them the opportunity to submit an application. Doesn't mean that it would be conforming, just means that they could submit the application. So, the way that the regulations are written now for kennel regulations with the 200-foot setback, those are written based on the existing regulations of kennels only being allowed in the agriculture district. If kennels are allowed in the general and the limited industrial district, and there's a proposal for an amendment, one of those proposals may be to lower the setback requirements in an industrial district. I'm just speculating on what a text amendment could look like, but that's something that the Planning Commission may be seeing in the future from the applicant. And if the applicant decides not to pursue a text amendment, they may, they may pursue variances for that application. So, again, there's nothing before the Planning Commission tonight for consideration on that matter. It's just something that I wanted the Planning Commission to know, that that discussion took place, and it is something that may occur on a future agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Was there anything else to your report?
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay. Questions? Yes, Mr. Stanulich?
The question that I have is that if what you're saying is true, does that mean that we'll eventually be coming back to possibly amend the general industrial district again?
It's possible that it might, it could be the general industrial, or it could be the specific use regulations for kennels themselves, which are in a different part of the zoning ordinance. And those are regulations that we haven't dealt with as part of this amendment, because we, to this point, wanted to address it just from a use and a district standpoint, not necessarily the special conditions that go with that use.
All right. Because I, I know I don't, I'm sure I can speak for a lot of us, is that we don't want to keep seeing the same things being amended all over again. So, I guess I'm looking for a direction on which way that you're suggesting that if this all takes place, which, which way are we going to amend? Are we going to amend the GI district, or are we going to amend the other section of the zoning ordinance?
I, at this point, I probably wouldn't recommend amending the GI district again, because I think, you know, from a use standpoint, I think we would be there with the proposed amendments. I think what we'd want to do is look at the specific kennel regulations themselves, which, when they were written, they were only allowed in agriculture district. And we would want to look at that section and say, okay, well, now that they're conditional uses in industrial, could we modify these to fit an industrial district with industrial neighbors? So, we'd be fine tuning that a little bit more. But to answer your question, it'd be a separate zoning ordinance section.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Thank you, Mrs. Stanulich. Any other questions at this point in time? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Under unfinished business, you will find it in your packet is a memo from Mr. Sloan in regards to Goya. The dated September 16th basically states that they are in compliance with where, what they're using the facility for now. You also find in there, there is a memo from Mr. Wyland in regards to the current use and the status of certificate of occupancy. There's nothing we really need to act on.
No action. I can answer any questions about the memo or the discussions that we had at our meeting.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sloan in regards to the memo? Yes. Mr. Iaquinto?
Did you say that there's a letter from Mr. Wyland as well? I don't have that in the packet.
Oh.
It's not in the packet, at least that I'm online with. It's not in the packet, sir.
I printed the packet today.
I'm looking at the packet that was emailed to us by Ms. Byrd, and it's not in that.
I have it. It was printed in there.
Yeah. It was in there.
Yep, from last week.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please. Mr. Roman?
It was provided in our emailed packet, and it's not online.
I printed this from online today.
Not online, on the township website.
Because that's what I'm on as well.
I agree with Mr. Iaquinto.
I'm online on the township website right now, and it is not on here, sir. So, I'm just stating, that's what I'm using here at the meeting.
Okay. Well, I'll read the memo. Memo simply states that the status of the structures located at the above referenced address under the Michigan code, Building Code, as, are as following. The two front buildings closest to North Territorial were approved for merchantile use with, along with S1 inventory storage. All other buildings were approved for S1 storage buildings for building materials, including lumber storage. The wholesale or retail sale of truck parts or a landscape supply store would be consistent with the merchantile use that was already approved in the front two buildings. Designating a space to do minor truck maintenance and upkeep in the front building is also viewed as an S1 use group under the Building Code, and therefore would be no change to the previous use of the building. The architect has accounted for the mixed use in his renovation plans, and there would be no significant changes to the occupant loads in either building. Once the renovations are completed, the township will issue a certificate of compliance or may issue a new certificate of occupancy with the new property owner listed on it, but technically, the current certificate of occupancy is still valid, since there is no reason to revoke it. That was a memo dated, memorandum dated September 1st, 2016 regarding the parcel, that parcel from Mr. Wyland. Yes, please.
All right. So, I have a couple of questions about this. Now, there was, obviously, there's some drawings, because there's reference to an architect in this, so there are drawings about what they want to do with that site. Was that from originally when the conditional use permit came through? Is that what we're, is that what they're looking at?
Right. Oh, go ahead.
We were provided them when they came through.
Right. But those, earlier this year?
Yes.
Late last year, whatever it was.
Last year.
Okay. So, that, those buildings originally had certificates of occupancy and, that are basically still, still there with the structures, according to Mr. Wyland's comments here, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, there was a retail outlet there originally in one of those buildings, because they had stuff that they would sell there, Carter lumber. Right?
One of the conditions that we've told the applicants is that if they want to do a permitted use, you know, they can do that, but if they establish those retail sales again as part of their conditional use, they'll require site plan approval prior to establishing that use. So, Carter lumber, I think they may have, but I think Goya was required to get their own special use.
Okay. Because, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm looking at what Mr. Wyland wrote, and from what I'm reading here, is that those buildings are already permitted to have retail sales in them. So, if they are?
I agree.
Then I'm asking, why is it that they have to come through and do an additional site plan and bring it before us, when those buildings are already certified to have retail sales in it?
I think it, them establishing the retail sales would prompt certain site changes, like parking and other site upgrades that they were proposing in their phasing on their plan, that would require Planning Commission review and approval.
What would be different? Excuse me if I may.
Yeah.
What would be different between that and Carter lumber and the, I mean, they sold hardware, plumbing, they sold all kinds of equipment, and I mean, also, I mean, it was almost a hardware store to some extent. I mean, it was a full-blown retail sales outlet with Carter, with the lumberyard.
And they occupied, they had more than 25% of retail sales in those buildings.
They had 100% of the one building.
Right. So, I'm just asking, why, why does it require a site plan unless they're going to be adding on or doing something to the outside structures that are going to, you know, change those buildings? If they're doing renovations inside the buildings themselves without changing the outside structure, why would there, that would require a new site plan when, looking at, from what Mr. Wyland said, is that they already have a certificate of occupancy that's valid?
And I haven't seen the, the old Carter's plans, and when they came to the township for special land use for the 25%, you know, it may have been because it's a different area that they're occupying, or that, you know, when Carter's left, if Carter's never had, you know, formal special land use approval, then whoever the new user is has to come in again and, you know, reestablish that use permit, or establish it if it wasn't prior, if it wasn't established prior. So, I think because it was treated as a separate conditional use to reestablish that, that would require them to go through the process of conditional use.
See, this came down to my question when we were going through the, the talk about the ES district out here, and I asked about the, the person who was doing mechanic auto repair up here, if they decided they were going to sell their, their building, and then if they could continue operating that, that facility, even though somebody else bought it, and it was basically told that it was going to be grandfathered in, no matter what changes we made, as long as they were continuing on with existing type of business. From reading Mr. Wyland's notes here, that these would be compatible type businesses or compatible type enterprises under the current occupant certificate that they have and that runs with these buildings. So, again, I'm just asking why it would require that, that site plan review?
I'm going to take and go to, you, you are, I'm going to go to Mr. Roman and then come back to Mr. Sloan. Mr. Roman?
I just want to make a point that Mr. Stanulich made. The saying have an architect accounted for the mixed use in his renovation plans. So, we were not provided renovation plans back last year, I don't believe. Again, this has been over a year. That was one of my points in August, that, you know, we get a refresher on this, which we still didn't get. But the point being is that if you're looking at Mr. Wyland's letter, he indicates that something is being altered. That's, that's my estimation and by what he's written. If you have an architect and you're renovating plans and you're accounting for mixed use, and he even states it that up above, that there, there will be a slight change, although it still fits in the use, it's a change. All of these are mechanisms, according to Article 31. I believe it's Section 36, 974. And it, and that would apply, that would, that would initiate them having to get a zoning compliance, which I don't think happened. I don't, I'm not sure. I, I don't, that's, that was a question I had last month. And nobody, nobody ever asked for the certificate of occupancy to be revoked. It's, it's, it's simply a fact that the current certificate of occupancy for Carter lumber is invalid. If you follow the steps of Article 31, Section 36, 972, Certificate of Zoning Compliance, and the next, this section away from that is Section 36-974, Certificate of Occupancy. Anytime there's an alteration or a change, which obviously there's a change, because now they're doing mechanic work in one of the buildings that, that I'm aware of, or that was pointed out, that would initiate them starting the steps all over to get a zone, a certificate of zoning compliance and get a certificate, certificate of occupancy according to the ordinance. So, it's just a matter that the current CO that's issued to Carter lumber is invalid. And through what Mr. Wyland's saying, it shows evidence that they should have started the process all over again. Whether they did or did not, I don't know at this time. But my other point being was on Mr. Sloan's write-up, I assume it's Mr. Sloan's, the second page, their first page, actually, the background and the existing site conditions is, you wrote that?
That was both the zoning administrator and me.
Okay. Number two, I just want to point out that it's saying that there was no formal motion granting conditional use approval, mentioned specifically the need for a separate site plan submission to reoccupy the site with a permitted use. That's not, that's not something that the Planning Commission normally would even have a say on. Again, and I keep referring back to Article 31, but, but that exactly is covered under Article 31, 36, 972, under the Administration and Enforcement. So, I just want to make a point that I don't see it necessary that we have to say that a separate site plan be submitted for them to reoccupy a permitted use. We, we shouldn't have asked, and we didn't ask. So, I just wanted to make that point. And then number three, on the same paragraph of the background, subsequent to the conditional use approval, the applicant proceeded to occupy and use the site, and nor, no formal site plan approval was applied or granted. Again, Article 31, Section 36, 972K tells you the procedure. So, technically, if you, if you look at those, under the Administration and Enforcement, they should have started again with a, an application for zoning compliance and gone through all the necessary steps, of which, in that same, that same article, a site plan is required. So, as far as the Planning Commission's concerned, as I stated back on the 17th, we did, we did our part, and I think we did it correctly, as far as I know. Other than not knowing if they technically filled out the, the correct application, paid the fees, I assume they did, because they went through our process. So, our process was correct, but where I see the problem lies was, again, in their reoccupancy of the building and starting their new business and doing whatever and continuing on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr. Stanulich.
So, I guess then my question is this, is that why are we even discussing this here when there's nothing before us and there isn't anything for us to review? I'm not sure why to even, why we're even discussing this, I guess.
I, I think the, the reason it's on as an unfinished business was that it was on the agenda a couple meetings ago, and this was an attempt to try to kind of have some closure to that agenda item, so that if it comes up at a future meeting or any other time, you know, we can formally say that we looked at the materials that were presented after the meeting took place, and this was the result of it.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Roman?
Just, just a comment. I mean, is that, I, I agree that, you know, we went, like, again, like I said, I think we went through our procedure and did it properly, but I, I still disagree that they should, they should have a new certificate of occupancy, they should have gone through the process, they should have submitted a site plan, maybe even building plans. You know, I've never stepped foot in the buildings, obviously. Somebody has, but that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess my question is, is, you know, what led them to put in an application for conditional use? Was that a application for zoning compliance that led to that need for a conditional use? I mean, no?
No. The, the, what led to the need for conditional use was the previous planner indicated that they would go through that process because of what Mr. Steele was discussing in his Phase 2 plans. And so, essentially, what happened was Mr. Lewan, at the time, basically said, look, get your approvals on everything up front, so you don't have to go through this process again. And that's really what ultimately muddied the water. But because, because he sort of, because there was a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 part of this process, and Doug basically said, you know, go in and get approval for all of it, so that you don't have to come back in front of the, the Planning Commission when, you know, so you don't have to do it in a piecemeal fashion, that's really what ended up. ended up creating this, creating what ended up occurring. Again, I, I, you know, I'll say what I said two months ago, which is it was the building officials' opinion all along, that the applicant had the right to occupy those buildings with the uses that, that he was, had and that there was no issues from that perspective. Whether or not there was issues, you know, a truck being parked here and a truck being parked there, there's no question that those things could come into play. Lastly, the only thing I would say is that we put every, everybody through zoning compliance. It's usually the first step in the process, so unless there was some kind of glitch in this particular process, I'm pretty certain they would have zoning compliance. I can obviously check that, but that's usually the first step in the process that, that we do. Again, unless there was some kind of glitch that I'm not aware of.
Okay. Well, my, my understanding, and then I'll go to Mr. Iquinto, is at this point in time, we're done with this process unless a Phase Two takes place?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. Do you have a question, Mr. Iquinto?
I did. So, did the applicant not need to go through the conditional use process?
The applicant's, my understanding is the applicant's, you know what, I, I need to check that, but my understanding is no, the applicant did not need to go through the conditional use process on the Phase One stuff.
So, we should refund their money to them then?
No. We, we, we ended up doing the work, Sam. We ended up going through the process. The applicant had representation. They had the ordinance in front of them. I, I would disagree with that.
But, but if we, if they went down that path and they didn't have to, according to Kurt Wyland?
Well, but I think the difference is, is the planner and the applicant sat down and made a conscious decision to go forward with the whole packet, everything altogether. And, and if the applicant was intending to do Phase Two, then absolutely they would have had to come for a, a conditional use. The applicant and the planner-
Yes, for Phase Two.
The applicant and planner together made a decision to come forward and go for the whole, everything at once. So, with that, I don't think-
Is that your understanding, Patrick? That the applicant did not need to get conditional use approval initially? Is that your understanding as well?
Yeah. For what they're doing right now, they, they didn't need to get conditional use approval. However, the worst-case scenario could have been where they didn't go through the process of conditional use. They reoccupied and then they come in much later to want to re, do retail and either they're denied retail or they have some conditions imposed on the retail use that is adverse to them and could jeopardize much of their operation. So, I think, no, they didn't have to do the conditional use to get in the door, but I think by them doing it, that gives them a little bit of predictability and security in the later years when they want to start that Phase Two.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Mr. Fink and then Mr. Roman?
Just a point of clarification. There was a question asked, why did they have to get conditional use approval if the Forte Carter Lumber site had sales previously? You know, again, at the time that the application came forward, I actually had the same thought process. I, I don't recall the specific details of, of why the planner recommended that. Probably mostly related to the time lapse between the closure of Carter Lumber and the reapp, re, you know, the, the new use, if you will. So, you know, that, that I can't speak to, but it's a good question to ask.
All right.
And I, I think that question needs to be clarified frankly, in the future, is how conditional use approval, some people believe it runs with the land. Other people feel differently.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Roman?
I was, I was just going to say that before Mr. Fink said it, but they were, they were correct in getting a conditional use approval for what they were proposing to have at the end. So, that's how we looked at the site plan a year ago. So, that was all correct. They just haven't done it yet. But then, my point is that the occupancy of it, that's a whole nother scenario, which really doesn't involve the Planning Commission's.
No.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other comments on Item A? If not, we'll move on to Item B. All right. Seeing other comments, Item B is the proposed amendments to repeal the ES Enterprise Service District, revise the general commercial, commercial districts, and rezone ES parcels to GC and related amendments. And I will turn that over to Mr. Sloan.
Thank you. This has been a, a process that's been in the works for the last two, three, four months of looking at ways to revise some of the standards of the ES district. There have been other elements regarding business uses, some of which relate to outdoor storage that we dealt with a few meetings ago. But a couple meetings ago, we, we had gone in the direction of considering repealing the Enterprise Service District completely and rezoning the current ES parcels to general commercial. And so, we went through the process of comparing the uses in the district, looking at the current land uses and seeing what the impact of that type of amendment would be. And so, we were directed to, at the conclusion of that analysis, to propose some amendments to the zoning ordinance to do just that. We have a memo here dated September 15th, 2016, and I'll just summarize some of the points of what the proposed amendments would consist of. The first would be the repeal of ES district, which is Article 20. Then, second is to delete any reference to the ES district in the establishment of the district section. That's virtually just a list of districts, so that's a pretty simple amendment with the repeal. The third is to delete references to the ES district anywhere else in the zoning ordinance. In this case, the only other reference to the ES district beyond the ES article itself are the signed regulations. So, the proposed text amendment included in the packet deletes the references to the ES district and the signed regulations. Because those references also include, are included in sentences that include the general commercial district, striking those references would not change the signed regulations, should the remainder of the amendments be approved. The fourth is to amend the general commercial district itself. In the enclosed amendments, one of the changes consists of adding hospitals, nursing homes, and sanitariums as conditional uses. They're currently conditional uses in ES but not permitted in general commercial. And to allow for a use of this type that's existing in the ES district to continue, we recommend adding that to the conditional uses in general commercial. Also, we recommend clarifying the conditions under which a dwelling unit may be located in a principal building for security purposes. And then also, the open-air display use was clarified to require a relationship to the principal use of the site and compliance with the requirements of the Storage of Materials section of the zoning ordinance. And that concern was noted because if there's outdoor display, the outdoor display of materials should be related to the principal use. It shouldn't be display of some off-site materials that don't relate to the onsite use. The fifth proposed amendment would be to amend the local commercial district. There's an enclosed amendment there that would clarify that food services and banks shall not have drive-through facilities in the local commercial. The reason that we reached into the local commercial district is that in general commercial, it starts by stating that all uses permitted in local commercial are also permitted in general commercial. But in the special land use standards, it specifically calls out that drive-through facilities are special land uses. So, this, this amendment is just an attempt to clarify the existing text of stating that any kind of drive-through facilities associated with a food service, a bank, or any other type of use is not a permitted land use. Rather, that's in the conditional uses. And then, the sixth and final one would be to rezone 11 parcels from ES to GC. Those parcel numbers and their associated addresses are identified in the memo. And then finally, it's not listed as an amendment, but we recommend that if these amendments are to be formally proposed, that the proposed amendments to the storage of materials that we reviewed a couple of meetings ago also be considered. Those were considered at the August 17th Planning Commission meeting. And the reason being is that in general commercial, there are a lot of outdoor storage types of uses and I would recommend having additional outdoor storage regulations go in tandem with those if we're opening up more outdoor storage uses in what is now the ES district. So, with that, that summarizes the amendments that are before you this evening and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Stanalichow?
Uh, thank you. On the page, which is Section 36 dash 793, signs permitted in business and industrial districts. In reading through this, there's a line in here that, that to me, I just want to clarify why it's in here. And it's the line that says, "Each of these types of signs shall require a separate permit." Because when I'm looking at this and I read through this whole, the language, I don't understand why it is that each sign would require a separate permit, when in fact, there's stipulations on how each sign can be used and there's only a certain amount of days that they can be, the permit can be used for. I, I personally would end up liking to see a line about, that before that, where it says, "The days of display," and then add in, "And types of sign must be specified in the sign permit." I, I think it's kind of redundant to have, you know, if they want six different signs, they have to end up applying for six different permits.
Can you, Mr. Stanalichow, can you just note where, where you're looking again?
It's on, it's on signs permitted in business industrial district. It's like one, two, three, fourth line down. I'm just saying that if I was a business and I was applying and having to pay for a permit to advertise or do any of these types of things, why it is they'd end up having to have a, a separate permit if I wanted to do some balloons and a banner? It seems to be kind of a redundant request.
Mr. Dikin.
Let me go to Mr. Fink-
I can answer that question.
And Mr. Roman? Or no? Okay. Mr. Fink?
Mr. Roman? I can answer that question. When we made those regulations, there were concerns about people leaving up various types of pennants and searchlights and balloons, that we wanted to have a mechanism in which we could, in fact, keep track of how often they were up and where they were up. Because if you, the, we, when we were reviewing the, the regulations, there was specific regulations related to, you know, how long you could have them for and then you had to take a break. And you could only have a certain number of these type of signs within a particular year. Okay? So, we wanted to keep track of how often folks had them up, how many permits they had pulled, that type of thing. So, it says, "Six of these type of signs shall be permitted in any one calendar year per zoning lot." We wouldn't have a way of knowing that unless they pulled an individual permit. And, and we had a whole conversation about this. This, this was related to the Planning Commission trying to frankly appease the business community to open the regulations a bit, to allow for a little bit more signage that is sort of promotional in nature and sort of, you know, current events or, or open, grand openings and things of that nature.
Right. Well, I understand that, but I'm, that says, "Six of these types of occasions." Now, so if they have to come in and apply for a permit, they have six times they can end up applying for a permit.
Correct.
How hard is it to keep track of that?
You'd be surprised.
What I'm just saying, what, what's the burden of having a, a separate permit for each individual type of sign that they want? That's all I'm saying. It's like it's-
What's the burden for the business owner to come in and fill out the permit?
Is there a cost to it?
There is.
So, to me, has to pay for each individual permit, they have to pay for each one of these things if they want to do them? So, if they wanted to do, if they wanted to do all of these six signs or different banners, pennants, stuff like that, they need a permit for each time that they, that they do that? And they could do that six times during the year?
That's what the, right, that's what the Planning Commission determined after significant debate.
All right. That, that line to me just seemed like that was, to me personally, that seemed like that was overburden.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stanalichow. Mr. Kuzno?
I just, I wasn't sure if Mark was thinking that these were six signs that happened at one time. It's six separate times throughout the year.
That's not the way I'm reading it though.
That's, that's the way it's intended to be, is that it's six separate times. It went, it says occasions. I think it's one sign per occasion, six times throughout the year. So, if you have a autumn sale, a summer sale, a spring sale, something like that, that was the idea. I think it was kind of more of a, it was more of a blight-type control than anything in terms of, like you said, leaving stuff up there for anything, the time that was annoying to other people.
Mr. Roman, or Mr. Dikin?
Mr. Fink and then-
People love to talk about signage, as Mr. Kuzno said, and some people will vehemently argue that it is absolutely necessary for business and, and successful sales. And other people see it as blight. And you have both sides of the spectrum. And in some ways, both sides are, are correct at, at various times. So, I, I would agree with Mr. Kuzno that one of the reasons why there is a tendency to regulate those kind of signs is because a lot of people just view them as tacky. They view them as tacky and not sort of in with character. That's not my opinion, but I'm just saying that is a general sense. And so, that is often how these kind of regulations and how this kind of language comes into play.
I had no problems with the regulation. I understand that. I understand the whole point behind that. My, my only question was is that if I wanted to put up a searchlight or balloons, I'd have to get a permit for each one of those, even though it's the same event. That's all.
I think that's-
No, 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 no. It's, it's one event. Yeah, it's a 14-day permit for, for an event, for each occasion.
But you can use all of them at one time if you want to for that period, right? You'd have to get a permit for each sign.
Correct.
Well, that's not what it says. Each type, each of these types of signs shall require a separate permit. So, I read that and I, I'm like, if I, if I'm reading this correctly, maybe I'm not.
If you want a banner, a pennant.
If you want a banner, you got to pay for a permit. If you want to put a pennant, you want to, you have to apply for a permit. If you want searchlights, you have to apply for a permit for that. That's all I was asking. Because when I read that, that's the way I interpreted that. You see what I'm saying? That's all I'm asking.
I now understand. Point taken.
Yeah, that's what-
I can see that.
And I just thought that that language seemed overburdened.
So, they can get one permit if you're, for one event and fly banners, pennants, searchlights, balloons, right? That's fine.
Yeah.
That's why I was confused, what you were asking.
Yeah. Maybe I wasn't explaining it right.
If you have to pay for each one of those, okay.
You understand now what I'm asking about that language? That's all.
And I think when we had that discussion, it was, they didn't want to have an event application that was then a free-for-all. I think that's what it was. Because, I mean, we don't have car dealerships here, but I can tell you from being at, from a car dealership, it can be a free-for-all for a week. I mean, I mean, trust me, you could spend half a million dollars on signs and, and not duplicate one sign. And, and, you know, but that, I think that's what it was, is, you know, what, what kind of signs are you going to have? Those, and each, each sign had to be permitted. You know, you can't have a billboard on your, on the, you know, your entire side of your building.
I, I was just bringing this up since we're talking about the sections and amending some of these things, is that that, that one seemed to be a glaring issue for me when I was reading it. If everybody else is fine with that, then that, that's fine. Then, one other section that I had a question on is, didn't we go through and allow for churches and those types of gathering places to be conditional use in, in GC and mostly other districts?
I believe we did.
Because I don't see that in this right here is, unless I missed it.
Yes, you did.
I just want to make sure if we're going to end up having a public hearing, we're going to be proposing the things that should be in there, so.
I mean, did this, did this, did this text come from our-
Old.
Yeah, you, uh-
Unicode?
Unicode and the update had not yet went to Unicode from when we adopted that. Unicode, and the update had not yet went to Unicode from when we adopted that?
I can't remember the dates of when we adopted that. I mean, we're still waiting on the latest update.
It wasn't that long ago.
Yeah, no, it wasn't that long ago.
So I think that's what happened, is this came from the Unicode, and Unicode was out of date.
Right. Yeah, this did come from Unicode, so if it's not, if it's not there, we can incorporate that, and, you know, update it so that it has the adopted version, which last came from the Board of Trustees, and then the changes proposed within that.
The only reason I bring that up is that if this is the text that we, you know, if that's, if that's the text we send out and is publicized for the public hearing, and then it goes before the Township Board, and they approve that, the way that it's presented, it's going to exclude those, and it, even though it was passed before. So they're sort of overriding it. I was just, it was just a notation that I noted.
Yeah. I mean, we're, I don't think we're at a point yet to schedule a public hearing on this, though. We're not there. We're not at a point to scheduling a public hearing.
No, no, I know, but I just wanted to make sure that the text we're looking at is correct. That's all.
So we'll need to see a revised text.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
A few comments, if I may?
Sure.
I'd highly encourage you to make number eighteen a permitted use. I'll read it for those who don't have the document in front of you. Restaurants serving alcohol beverages, provided that the gross receipts there have derived from the sale of food and other goods and services exceed fifty percent of the total gross receipts. It's a significant effort to try and attract restaurant, bars, and entertainment-type uses into the districts within Whitmore Lake, and I encourage that to be a permitted use rather than a conditional use. Additionally, there is a, what looks to be an error. Number sixteen shows bowling alleys as a conditional use. Number four shows bowling alleys as a permitted use. And as a general note, I also encourage from a, from a overall... From a, from an overall regulatory perspective, I sort of generally encourage there to be more permitted uses than there are conditional uses, and/or a little bit more even. I encourage you to go through the conditional uses and look at them from an impact perspective as it relates to what you have as permitted uses, to determine which ones you think should be permitted and which ones you think should be conditional. So that's my personal sort of opinion and recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fink. And Mr. Roman, did you have anything?
I just have a comment that...
Sure.
None of those, none of the proposals right there were listed. I mean, didn't have time to consider it about talking about it tonight.
Right. I, I mean, my thoughts on this is, we need to see the proper text to begin with. I mean, this will have to come back to us to look at. It's not, in my opinion, it's not ready for us to take any kind of action on, other than to just ask the planner to go look at the, make sure that the right current text is the text being used, reintegrate the stuff that needs to be integrated into that, work with Mr. Fink on his thoughts on that.
Well, wait a second. I brought that up not to imply that we were going to act on it...
No, no, no. We would just like to consider...
Not to imply that we were going to act on it tonight, but to ask the question of what the Planning Commission's general thoughts are.
I just said we're not going to act on anything tonight.
No, I understand that, but I don't want to give Mr. Sloan my opinion as to adding more to the permitted uses as opposed to the conditional uses if that's not the Planning Commission's wishes.
I was stating it as a consideration. Mr. Iquanto?
I was just going to suggest that if we went through the conditional uses, one through twenty-two, and you can read them off and show hands whether that should be...
I don't think these are the twenty-two uses that are allowed. I think this is the old twenty-two uses that are allowed. I believe there is a different text.
I understand that.
My apologies, Mr. Chair.
I understand that, but this way we could still get a jump on that, and...
But I don't think these are correct. I believe there are, there is a, there is a different ordinance out there for these, this zoning district that's different than what's in front of me. I don't want to rehash something that's not up to date. I would much rather we get the proper text in front of us, because we did make changes to uses in more ways than just adding something. So I would really like to see the proper text, at which time we can then go through one by one and determine whether or not it's appropriate. Yes, Mr. Roman?
I brought up, the last meeting, five through seven, was, is that what you're speaking of also? I don't have the exact copy in front of me. I'm looking at Mr. Kuzno's laptop, but I brought up that five through seven don't exist on, on the, what's available at the Township online, and then, so now we have it, so is that also going to be...
I mean, that...
I brought that up, but I don't see, I don't know if it's been corrected or not. That was under...
Under the...
Conditional.
We'll look at the recently adopted...
Yeah. I think it's... Yes, Mr. Stanilejo.
I totally agree that we need to see the updated versions, but I, what I would make the suggestion is that, to Mr. Fink and to our planning consultant, that if they have any recommendations on changing from a conditional use to permitted use, to at least provide us that in writing, and then we can discuss that to see whether or not we agree with that. That way, it at least gives us some idea and guidelines of what it is other people are thinking, too.
Absolutely. And that was my point of, you know, if there's, if there's suggestions to consider, I'd like to know what those are. Certainly, Mr. Fink is, you know, man on the street, right? Right there in, on the front lines of knowing who's coming in, being involved at the level of a municipality, trying to get businesses in. What are some obstacles? And it sounds to me like that very well may be an obstacle that doesn't necessarily need to be there. But it's something for us to consider. So, Mr. Sloan, are we, are you comfortable knowing what we're looking for, then?
Yes. What we'll do is, we'll modify the zoning ordinance to reflect the most recent adopted version, so that we have what's current. We can bring that up at the next meeting, so that we're on, we're on the same page, literally. And any proposals that we have for recommendations for making conditional uses permitted, or any other types of, you know, reclassification uses, to bring those before the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission can consider those, as well as any other uses it sees on that district.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Chick?
I think it's okay to, to bring personal preferences or opinions to what you're going to present, but I think we should also be looking at what is allowed in the similar zoning areas in communities around us. I think that may give us a better idea, actually, of what we might want to be looking at.
In particular, those communities that have been able to successfully revitalize certain things using certain types of businesses. So if you take a look at, oh, there's a wide variety of them, be them, you know, while they're much larger communities than us, but Northville and Brighton, I mean, some of those have had some success in attracting certain types of businesses into their commercial areas. So I don't know how they're permitted versus allowed uses compared to ours, but... All right. Any other comments or questions on this agenda item? Seeing none, we're going to move on. The next item on the agenda is the new business. It's the amendments to the Northville Township zoning ordinance text to make kennels conditional uses in the limited industrial district and the general industrial district. Mr. Iquanto?
I'd like to make a recommend, make a motion to recommend to the Township Board that Article eighteen, limited industrial district, section thirty-six dash five-ten, under conditional uses, add number ten, kennels subject to the requirements of section thirty-six dash seven-one-four.
And general commercial?
I was going to do each one separately. I felt it was appropriate to do so.
Okay. It's fine. There's a motion. Is there support?
Support.
This motion by Mr. Iquanto, supported by Mr. Stanilejo. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Roman?
Question. You're doing them separately?
Yes.
You're doing light and then general?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other, any discussion on the motion?
I felt with any amendment tax that it should be done separately. It was a recommendation to the board.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Roman?
I'll have a, I had a comment. I thought we were going to do them together, but I just have a comment about this particular one. And although I personally feel the kennels are really not a great fit in either the industrial zonings, more so in a general industrial, but since there's a, an existing nonconformance, and this business is closely adjac, if you look at that particular area, there's some closely adjacent agricultural, residential, and LDR, low-density residential zonings, almost on three sides of the area, if you give it some room. I feel it's, it's less impactful to the surrounding area than other typical uses that are in general industrial, so for that reason, I'd be in favor of it, so. But I just wanted to point that out, because it's kind of a peculiar, 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 peculiar...
There you go.
...situation there. There's a general industrial, and across the street, there's residents, and that side of the territorial, there's more residents, so. But I feel that, you know, for what they're doing there, it's less impactful, so I think it's favorable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Yes, Mr. Kuzno?
I think I missed the, this was, this command started on August seventeenth, is that correct? Is that, I know, I missed that.
I believe it. Yeah, I think it was. Right? Yeah.
So, but why don't we just address that particular site versus modifying the whole ordinance in this case here? Is there, am I way out of line in asking that question at this point in the game, or not?
You can't, you can't.
You can't do just a swipe.
You can't.
I can't, or?
No. You, you, we cannot, there is no mechan, there is no legal zoning mechanism that the Township has to address that singular site.
Okay. Even though it's existing nonconforming?
Correct.
But the reason it's brought up is because we're asking for changes to that site now? Is that, we're going to be asking for changes to that site?
It's a little bit of both, remember, Kuzno? The, initially, Ann Arbor Dog Club came in and brought it to our attention. It then came out that the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission felt as though it was an item that was a good idea to move forward with, because the planner had, was in agreement. The planner then, at a subsequent meeting, made the recommendation to move forward with a change in that district. The applicant then came in just a week ago to actually submit the form that we gave him two and a half months ago, that he was supposed to submit in the first place for a text amendment. He submitted it last week. So it's a little bit of both. I mean, it came in relative to a specific site, and that is how it came to our attention. The Planning Commission then felt as though, at least the majority of the Planning Commission, I assume, felt as though that it was an appropriate change of the regulation because it made sense. So it was a little bit of both, with, in, in all fairness, and to make sure that everything is out in the open, it was a little bit of both.
We made a movement as a...
That's right.
We made a movement as a board to move forward, even though the applicant hadn't moved forward.
Okay.
Okay. And, and then secondarily to that, to your question, to your first question, there is no legal mechanism under the statutes that allow for us to deal with a site individually. The only way that that's even possible is to do what they call a use variance. But when the law was passed with Michigan, in Michigan outlawing use variances, the specifics of law indicated that if you were a township and you were doing use variances prior to the law being passed, you could continue the practice. But if you were not, then the practice effectively ended. I wasn't around in Michigan when that law passed, so I don't know the specific particulars. That is my general understanding. We are in a position where we cannot do a use variance. So anytime we get into a situation in which a business comes forward, and myself, who almost always is the first person that has that interaction, and we sort of scratch our heads and say to ourselves, "This makes a lot of sense to allow." We have no, we have no process. We have no ability to do it without amending the ordinance.
Not even rezoning necessarily? I mean, that's...
No, you cannot, because you cannot do, you cannot allow for a rezoning if it's, it's basically considered at that point spot zoning. And in this particular case, you're, you're not rezoning, because there's zoned industrial, so you can't rezone that site to something that will allow dog, you know, will allow for kennels that the master plan doesn't support, because you're not in conformance with the master plan at that point. Only time you can do a singular zoning application is when you're in conformance with the master plan. And then you can come around and say, "Yes, a singular zoning application makes sense," because the Planning Commission has already identified that in their long-range vision.
All right. Just one last thing. Sorry to prolong this. It sounds like they're going to propose some different language than just kennel at this point, particularly, are we jumping the gun here, I guess, is the question? If we're going through this effort for this particular applicant, who hasn't really applied yet, their use does not qualify necessarily as a kennel, is the way I understood it, just from brief, briefly discussing what, hearing what Dave said this evening, Mr. Hughes. Is that true?
Well, most dog-related uses, in the absence of having a dog training facility, many ordinances will classify those types of uses as a kennel, even though it may not be what the common definition of kennel is. Sometimes they'll just lump it all in there to say, "Look, if it's boarding, training, you know, in some, some limited cases of care," you know, it's lumped in the definition of kennels, because a lot of the times, it's the same onsite and offsite impacts. When we originally started this, we knew of Ann Arbor Dog Club being located in an industrial district. Rezoning it to a district that allows kennels would make AR agriculture the only district. Many reasons for us not to do that. We would shrink our industrial district. It would go against the master plan, and it would put a new AR district abutting industrial districts, which would really limit the uses of a viable AR district. And so what we looked at doing was to allow kennels and industrial on limited basis, on a limited basis, as conditional uses. We cited a couple of municipalities that do allow them in their limited industrial districts, or light industrial, or their general industrial districts, where sometimes they make sense, because industrial uses, common industrial uses like manufacturing and kennels can sometimes make good neighbors, because one oftentimes doesn't care about the noise or impacts of the other. So we pursued that regardless of what Ann Arbor Dog Club may have proposed. If they had proposed something completely contrary, to make it, say, permitted use in every district, I don't think that affects what the Planning Commission's doing here. The Planning Commission is pursuing it, because we ultimately decided that it was in the best interest of the Township ordinance. You know, perhaps in the future for this site, but for any other industrial site that, you know, may be looking for a repurposed use, the kennel might be a viable use for that.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Any other discussion on the limited industrial? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iquanto?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Motion passes, and limited industrial can be, will be advanced to the board for their consideration. Is there another motion in regards to general industrial?
I make a motion to propose to the Township Board to amend Article nineteen, G I Industrial District, Section thirty-six dash five-three-three... Industrial District, Section thirty-six dash five-three-three, under number ten, kennels subject to the requirements of Section thirty-six dash seven-one-four.
Support.
Motion by Stanulich, supported by Iquinto. Any discussion on the motion for general industrial? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Cusino?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Motion carries. General industrials to be advanced to the Township Board for their consideration. Item twelve on the agenda is the approval of the preceding minutes from September seventh, two thousand sixteen. A copy of the minutes have been provided in your packet.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented Sept, for the September seventh, two thousand sixteen meeting of the Planning Commission.
Support.
Motion by Iquinto, supported by Chick. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, final call of the public. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board, you may do so at this time. Seeing no one, move on. Comments from commissioners? We'll start down there with Mr. Roman.
Thank you. You heard me talk a lot about Article thirty-one. While in researching Article thirty-one for tonight's meeting, I found according to Section thirty-six, nine-seventy-one, number six, under duties of the zoning administrator, that the zoning, quote, "The zoning administrator shall submit quarterly report in which a summary of the activities of the office is presented." And for all the years, you know, being on the Planning Commission, I don't recall that being the case, set aside from monthly updates from the, you know, the planning consultant or staff, or, but I would, I'd like to formally request that this be followed. I think it's, I think it would be a good thing, give us a handle on timeframes and, you know, what the status is of a lot of things, so. It's in our ordinance, I think we should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cusino?
No comment, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stanulich?
I'd like to make sure we all keep our men and women in uniform in our thoughts and prayers, and it also goes for our police and first responders. They're the ones that are keeping us safe and allowing us to have our freedom of expression that we're doing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I just wanted to thank Howard Fink and for his quick action, and the board's quick action on the purchase and the acquisition, I should say, of the Van Curler property. If we had hesitated, we probably would have lost it, and somebody else would be doing something else there, other than, you know, what the Township community wanted. And I think it's the most exciting thing that's happened in this Township, especially in the downtown area, in many, many years, so congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Iquinto?
This question's for Mr. Fink. What is the mechanism, once we make a recommendation to the board, that it's followed through and brought to the board? Because I know at times, things have not happened that way. I'm not blaming anybody, but is there a procedure now that is in effect for that process, so that things don't fall through the procedural cracks?
Recommendation of what?
So we recommended two items be brought to the Township Board tonight for the meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's been resolved.
So what is, what is the policy? What is the procedure, so that it is resolved?
Staff now understands what it means, what an ordinance, staff understands the process, whereas when we were having some turnover and change of administration, there was breakdown of that process, because there wasn't an understanding of what ordinances had to go to the Township Board and what don't. When you are training someone new, and they're a layperson, it's not always intuitive as to what goes to the board and what doesn't, because to an individual, it all seems like you're just changing ordinances, right? So it's really was a matter of training more than anything else, and that has now been addressed.
So who does that now?
In the, in the process, the ES district one was a combination of training and a combination of the planners being changed.
So the procedure is now, is it Ms. Byrd, is it yourself that?
It's a combination. Both of us are aware of what's going on at the Planning Commission and what needs to be voted on at the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
But there's no procedure, per se. There's no document that is, is passed from one person to another. It's knowledge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any comments this evening. Announcements, the next regular meeting will be on October fifth, two thousand sixteen. All right. Hearing nothing else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eight seventeen.